I'd like to call the October 6th morning session of the Johnston County Commissioners to Order and welcome all of you here this morning. Good to see everyone here. Also want to recognize the folks who are watching us on our live stream on YouTube. Welcome to you as well. Before we get started, I did want to make mention of our six board priorities, which are educational funding, infrastructure, financial stewardship, land use, public safety, and our county employees. And I think we've got a little bit of everything in here in this slightly lengthy morning session. And as is customary, we will begin with invocation. I've asked Commissioner Davis to lead us in that. And we have the pledge, which will be led by VFW Post 5955 out of Selma. So if you choose to stand, please do so now for the invocation.
If you would, please bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day and this beautiful fall weather. Thank you for allowing us to live in this great nation, state, and county. Please bless this meeting and guide our hearts and minds as we work together in service of the citizens of Johnston County. Please grant us wisdom and guidance for your work. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
If y'all gentlemen would stay just for a second, and we have a proclamation on the Operation Green Light that Commissioner Godwin's gonna share with us. It's the, I think this is the third or the fourth year we've done this.
I can't remember, third year, I think.
Yes, third.
I think it is. If you're ready for it now, let me start.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm gonna read this proclamation. I'll do it from here. Whereas the residents of Johnston County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Johnston County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the various veteran service organizations, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life and are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Johnston County appreciates the service, the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, be it resolved with designation as a green light for Johnston County, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners hereby declares November 4th through the 11th, 2025, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Johnston County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who've made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence, and further encourages all municipalities within Johnston County to display green lighting wherever possible at public buildings. Mr. Chairman, I move this be adopted this sixth day of October, 2025.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I would say one thing, Mr. Chairman. The week that was designated is the week before Veterans Day, but I think it's been historically appropriate for, to say, right now is the starting time. Everyone start showing a green light from now through Veterans Day.
I would agree with that. We will do that at my house. Hope my wife is watching, so she'll know to do that. But remember that. We have them. I saw them the other day. All right, any other comment? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate you.
The next item is consent agenda items.
We have to adopt it then.
Oh, thank you. I skipped that, didn't I?
Do you want that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, yeah. So sorry, we didn't back up one. I was in a hurry while the veterans were still here to get that in.
That's all right.
All right, now we'll take approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right, let's get off of that one. All right, now we'll get the consent agenda. There are six items still on this. They are approval of the minutes from our September 2nd morning and evening session. There's some additions to the DOT system. There's also reappointment of our animal cruelty officers. We have several board appointments on there. I'm not gonna go through all these, but they're up on the screen if you wanna look at those. And we do have some, and in this motion, we will need to have some waiver of length of service policy on some of those. We do have some we'll vote for later today. We have some budget revisions for the library and the shares department. And finally, we have our tax releases and refunds from August 16th through November, excuse me, September 15th. Are there any items on the list that need to be removed for further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the consent agenda, including the waivers necessary.
Second. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right, the consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have public comment. And this is a time for any member of the audience that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda to come forward and speak. It looks like from what I see in here, most people are on the agenda to speak. So, Madam Clerk, any emails? All right, the next item is proclamation for Employee Appreciation Week. And staff is requesting the board adopt this proclamation for October 20th through the 24th. And I've asked Commissioner Rose to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is an honor. And I'll say, in my time on the board, I have been so impressed with our employees. This is not just words. It is really what I feel. I have seen dedication that I really didn't imagine was the case. And it is the case. And our employees are much appreciated. So I'm very glad to read this. Whereas Johnston County employees represent over 1,000 men and women working in 31 different service departments and agencies devoted to making Johnston County a better place to work and live. And whereas Johnston County employees provide a multitude of services for all the citizens of the county. And whereas Johnston County employees are both skilled and efficient in their jobs, making every effort to expend county tax dollars in the most effective way for the betterment of the county and its citizens. And whereas Johnston County government runs smoothly on a day-to-day basis primarily because of the dedicated employees in each of its departments and agencies. Now therefore, in appreciation for their dedication to the welfare of the citizens of our county, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October 20th to 24th, 2025, as County Employee Appreciation Week, adopted this sixth day of October, 2025. And I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? I'm gonna say my four words. Not my four words, they're four words, but that represent our employees: empowering, responsive, compassionate, and visionary. I think that sums up our employees. And I'm looking at a lot of them sitting in here very well in the work they do. And as Commissioner Rose mentioned, their dedication and service to all the citizens of Johnston County is much appreciated by me and this board. So.
Absolutely.
Any other comments?
Did a.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next we have proclamation for National 4-H Week. And Bryant, are you gonna come forward and start this? But I've asked Commissioner Stovall to read the proclamation, so.
I'll just make a brief mention. We certainly appreciate the many ways that Johnston County Board of Commissioners supports the employees in our department in cooperative extension. We work together with North Carolina State University to serve the citizens of Johnston County. We're very proud and pleased to be able to do that. Meredith Wood is gonna come up and say a few words. She's one of our 4-H agents here in Johnston County that's quite capable of handling this.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be here today. And I love the 4-H green. I'm sorry, I have on my second favorite color, which is Wolf Pack red.
We're still celebrating everything again.
That's right. That's right. We are just so humbled to always stand here and represent extension and 4-H for me. And it's something that I love and have a lot of passion for. And it's important here in Johnston County. I know you know that. And what better way to start 4-H Week than we had a state shooting sports tournament on Saturday, as well as we crowned the very first Miss Johnston County 4-H and Junior Miss Johnson County 4-H on Saturday night. That's why my voice is a little rough today. But I'm so excited about that and just mentoring these young people where they are through our programs, through our schools, through our 4-H clubs. It is so important for them to learn these life skills. And I really hope I'm gonna bring them to you, to introduce them to you soon. So that's something to look forward to. So thank you for having us today.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Stovall?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something near and dear to me because I am a 4-H leader in the shooting sports program. National 4-H Week proclamation. Whereas 4-H youth across the nation are leading efforts to solve problems in their communities and make a difference for their futures. And whereas 4-H is the largest youth development organization in North Carolina and the largest in the nation with over 6 million participants. And whereas 4-H in North Carolina claims 188,000 youth members and 16,000 volunteers, while Johnston County's 4-H program numbers reach more than 4,000 youth participants and more than 200 volunteers. And whereas 4-H is a part of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension System of NC State University and North Carolina A&amp;T State University, is a program where youth learn opportunities provide them hands-on experiences in 4-H missions mandated of science, engineering, and technology, healthy living, and citizenship. And whereas 4-H has connected with youth and their communities with the innovative research and resources from our nation's 112 land-grant universities and colleges of more than 100 in 20 years. Now therefore, the Johnston County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 5th through the 11th, 2025, as National 4-H Week in Johnston County. We urge the people of the county to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program that enhances young people's interest in their futures as part of Johnston County 4-H Youth Development, and join us recognizing unique partnerships between our county and our state university system. And Mr. Chairman, I offer this in the form of a motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I would just like to thank again the staff, but then also all the club volunteers. Being able to have 200 volunteers is a lot to manage, and they wouldn't be successful without the volunteers.
Yes, they would not.
So thank you to all the volunteers that helped with all the 4,000 youth participants. And I know also upcoming is the state fair, where a lot of them are about to be showing some animals in the next couple of weeks. So really exciting.
Fantastic.
I might also add that in my career as a banker, I was involved in the youth livestock show a lot. And I've seen kids grow up and now are adults with kids through that program. And they're quite responsible citizens. I attribute that to leaders like Meredith and her extension agent. Good problem.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that my wife grew up in the 4-H program, and she is now in the North Carolina 4-H Hall of Fame.
Wow.
And I would just add, we talk about youth development. And we, as commissioners, get to see at least once a year those very impressive young men and women come in front of us. And then usually at the annual conference for the Association of County Commissioners, we get to spend a little time with them. And tremendous job. And I'm not surprised to hear you say how successful they are in whatever they do down the road. But it's very impressive when they come up here and speak better than, I'm gonna say me, I was gonna say all of us, but I'm just gonna say me. They did a great job there. So anyway, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, the next item is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we have Harbor Executive Director Kay Johnson here to speak. And Commissioner Stevens is going to read the proclamation when it's time.
Good morning, Commissioners. On the behalf of the Harbor Board of Directors and the staff, we would like to express our gratitude to the Johnston County Commissioners for proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As we continue to experience an increasing challenge within our community as it relates to domestic violence, your support for the mission of this organization is invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you for all y'all do with Harbor. Whereas, home should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, safety, and peace. However tragically for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas domestic violence touches the lives of Americans of all ages, leaving a devastating impact on women, men, and children of every background and circumstance, with a family's home becoming a place of fear, hopelessness, and desperation, when an individual is battered by their partner, a child witnesses the abuse of a loved one, or a senior is victimized by a family member. And whereas survivors deserve safety, when we advocate for survivor's safety, we must consider all that safety encompasses: physical, emotional, spiritual, and financial. Survivors have a right to live in homes, workplaces, neighborhoods, and institutions that are free of violence. And whereas survivors deserve support, living through and healing from trauma can be a lifelong journey, and new threats to their safety can resurface trauma reactions in profound ways. Survivors are deserving of support and care at all stages of their lives as they navigate both these echoes and emerging new threats. And whereas survivors deserve solidarity, nobody should have to stand alone in the face of hardship. Community connectedness is critical to effective advocacy. We must continue to show up for survivors no matter what. And whereas since 1984, Harbor Incorporated has been actively involved in addressing domestic violence in our community, and has collaborated with numerous people and groups to respond, educate, and bring awareness to all people about domestic violence. And whereas Harbor Incorporated serves over 3,000 direct victims and survivors annually, and would like to invite everyone to support October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as it would be dedicated to the With Survivors Always campaign. And whereas this campaign underscores the urgent need for involvement by taking action, speaking out, breaking our silence, and seeking help when we see this problem in our life, in our family, and in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Johnston County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges all citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence, support those who are working towards its end, and make a personal commitment to get involved in the campaign With Survivors Always. Proclaimed the sixth day of October, 2025. And I'd like to submit that in the form of a motion.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, here it's done. We will, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item up is a presentation by Smithfield Town Manager Mike Scott on Smithfield Ballpark Project. Good morning, Mr. Scott.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Manager. Appreciate everyone having us for a few moments this morning. We're gonna be as brief as we can. Before I get into my presentation here, I have the President of the Tobs here, Greg Swere. He has his staff as well. But I'm gonna ask him to come up and just give a couple of minutes on the background of the Tobs and what they potentially could bring to Johnston County.
I will be honest, I did not know I was gonna be on television this morning. So now my wife would be thankful that she picked out my attire. So, good morning. Thank you so much for, first of all, for the opportunity to discuss this potential over the last three months. I am sure as an elected official, you were besieged by conversations. And I am very thankful that you had the kindness to begin discussions late July, early August with us. I am humbled by that, to be perfectly honest with you. I've been doing this now for 26 years in the Coastal Plain League. And without a doubt, this has been the most conversational process I've had. And truly, as a board that is elected and represents every single person in this county, I thank you for your time. So who are the Tobs? Team dates back to 1908, right? Down, just down the street in Wilson. But we have emerged as much more than that over the last 15 years under our leadership. The first thing I want everyone to see is, you know, basically, there are four tent poles to the Tobs. First and foremost for us is our track record of success. I've been in Thomasville for 26 years as the president there with the High Toms, and 15 great years in Wilson with the Tobs. And what's so wonderful about that is we have a sense of what's going on in this league, but more importantly, what we need to do as an organization to serve the people of our community. And that's what we intend to do. And that's what we've done throughout, of course, our process. And the first way we've done that is the calendar of events. When you look at what Mike Bell and Griff and our staff do right now, and what we're gonna immediately move, if things go well, to Johnston County, is a proven track record of success for events. We start our events in February. We will host over 10 to 12 colleges from throughout the Northeast down at our facility for over 11 days because it's just a little bit too chilly up north to play baseball. But not here in Johnston County. We've done that for the last 12 years in Wilson. That morphs right into our spring schedule. And this is something that I kinda give everybody an idea. Some of the ideas have been mine, but Mike Bell supersizes everything. It's like going to McDonald's and getting small fries. He comes back with the big fries, right? And this past year alone, we had 31 different high schools from seven eastern North Carolina counties that participated in our high school scholastic events on Saturdays. By the way, it did not cost the high schools one dime to participate. So that just shows a commitment that we have to the youth of our county and our area. And I noticed that in talking about 4-H, just to let you know, I'm from Louisiana. And my whole family were farmers, and my grandfather was a feed store owner. So it's kinda near and dear to my heart, especially sweet potatoes. Because guess what? I used to pick sweet potatoes down in Jefferson Davis Parish where I grew up, in Jennings and Lake Harthell, Louisiana. But one of the things about our calendar events is, is it keeps the vitality of the ballpark going. So after our high school classics, we morph right into the Tobs 26 to 28 game home schedule, which, oh by the way, we did win the Pettit Cup in 2025, which was a great accomplishment by our staff, and has a multitude of events outside of baseball, from picnic to recognizing our youth readers in our public school system, which is a completely free program that we run with the youth of our community, to recognizing veterans, young individuals who are going ahead and entering into the Army as well. We recognize them at home plate. We have a great barbecue festival at the ballpark as well. There's always something to do at our ballpark besides baseball if you venture and if you come to the games. But we don't stop in the fall. As a matter of fact, right now, Mike and them tonight will be hosting high school area fall baseball. So we've done that for the last 12 years at Fleming Stadium, where we have 10 high schools. Three of the high schools, by the way, are from Johnston County who are participating now in our program. So what does that all lead into? Amateur sports growth. We are all about amateur sports. Now, we have been pretty much exclusively baseball in Wilson, but that is setting the tone for other things. Because in Thomasville and High Point, I have run with the High Toms, the largest high school football jamboree in the southern Piedmont. We had over 1,500 student athletes in our football jamboree this past August. And oh, by the way, we also host, because my daughters play lacrosse, we host the largest lacrosse jamboree also in the triad as well with over 750 athletes. So we are squarely focused on amateur sports. We want our kids to be able to have opportunities and grow. And that rolls right into what we want to do for you. We want to be an economic generator for you by being a destination. So all this programming has one thing in common. They have to come to this brand-new facility to see these events and to see these activities. And with this facility, we can begin to brand, along with all of our other great partners in Johnston County, as Johnston County being the Mecca for amateur sports growth in the state of North Carolina. That's what we feel like this particular stadium can do as we move forward. But again, I thank you so much for the opportunity to say hello this morning, and also to have dialogue over the last few months. And we look forward to a great relationship going forward. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, for sure.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
All right, I'll skip through this PowerPoint presentation relatively quickly. Want to make sure everybody understands. Maybe, okay. So the town is prepared to allocate $3 million as well as the land out at Community Park for this facility. We're asking county government provide us with $2 million to assist with this. That would be $1 million in the current fiscal year and $1 million in the next fiscal year. The venue, the stadium, the ball field, be owned by the town of Smithfield and maintained by the town of Smithfield. But the primary goal of this is to bring baseball and bring this venue and this economic engine and all the things that Greg talked about to Johnston County as a whole. So if it can't be done in the town of Smithfield, it should be considered someplace else. This is not something that Smithfield's gonna get rich over. $1 of sales tax spent in Clayton returns the same amount to Smithfield if it's spent in Clayton, if it's spent in Smithfield, if it's spent in Four Oaks, or if it's spent in a rural area of the county. Primarily, that's what we're going to see. So if there's some other location that y'all feel would be better, we just don't want to see this opportunity get away from all of us. We met with a design build firm on Friday that was responsible for the Field of Dreams in Dyersville, Iowa. Glad to provide their information. We can create some, we can watch a ball field walk out from a tobacco field sometimes, if we think that would be the better answer. Again, our primary revenue sources that are generated from this project are sales tax and occupancy tax. Occupancy tax being the tax that comes in through the hotels. Neither, again, specifically benefits town of Smithfield due to the stadium being located here. We have the hotels, regardless of where the Tobs play baseball, if it's in Johnston County, they're gonna be in the hotels in Smithfield, because that's where they are. Johnston County is the greatest benefactor for sales tax revenue. Y'all know how sales tax works. It all gets spent, it all goes to state, it all comes back to the county, and it gets divided up into the municipalities ad valorem by the tax value. Johnston County and the county tourism, Aaron Mullins is here from tourism, their budget this year is $1.4 million annually. So that's the kind of money that's coming in right now through the hotels. Most of that, 99%, of that is going directly to tourism with only a small amount coming straight to the county. But that's a sizable amount of revenue coming in from hotel stays. But that's a sizable amount of revenue coming in from hotel stays. We used some information that Wilson, City of Wilson, provided us, tried to come up with some kind of economic impact. The City of Wilson told us that, on average, 1,750 hotel rooms stays a year are generated by the TOPS. That's two people in each hotel room. That's, by economic standards, that's 86,500 day visitors per year. This generates direct spending of over $8 million annually, with a total economic impact of $12 million a year for the, again, in sales tax and occupancy tax for the entire This equates to about the equivalent of a business having 99 full-time jobs. More conservative, and I am a conservative, I always underestimate revenues, and I try to make sure that the town of Smithfield doesn't overspend, and I'm sure Rick does the same. So I'm estimating more as a conservative number of direct spending of $5 million, with an economic impact of a little over $7 million, that equates to about 60 full-time jobs. I think that's a very reasonable, very conservative number for this operation. I know Chad's back here, he can tell you how much sales tax $5 million generates, but I believe it's a little over $350,000 a year. So where are we today? We have land identified at Community Park. It'll be right across, basically, from the middle school, across Buffalo Road. We have RFQs published and accepted by the town for design-build firms. We have, meetings have been held with the four finalist firms. We're prepared to make a recommendation to our town council on selecting a firm tomorrow night at the council meeting. Wednesday, we intend to meet with Aaron and his group at Johnston County Tourism to, again, request financial assistance of tourism dollars at their normal meeting. And Thursday, we hope to be working and meeting with the selected design firm to create a plan and a, and a project timeline going forward. So this is kind of an overlay of where the ball field would sit, and on the land that we have projected out across from the middle school. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. My assistant director, Kim Pickett, is also here, and Greg has his staff too, so I think we can probably answer anything that might come up.
Any questions for Mr. Scott?
About how, what is the capacity for the stadium?
It'll be a minimum of 1,500 people, possibly up to 1,800. Once we get into the design phase, we'll see what we can fit on the site, as well as what we can afford.
Mike, is that between the VFW house in the corner, but closer to the VFW?
It's, it's the DAV, and that, that house will have to go. It'll sit right on top of that.
I got you.
And we have been in communication with them. That house was basically loaned to them for a little over a dollar a year since 2009, and they knew going in that it was temporary, and we've, we've helped them with that, and we're helping them find a place to go. I know that Kim's been in contact with Rick, and everybody's working to help them out.
Okay. Any other questions?
About how long would it take for construction of the project?
Well, it depends on how we want to construct the project. The entire project, once we break ground, is probably a four- to six-month project, but we may build it in phases, depending on how the finances come in. And the TOPS have some of their own apparatus that they're going to bring in that is mobile, some of the things that help support the field. So that's going to cut down on costs, and we have to lay that all out. So that, that's kind of the timeline, but it could go longer than that. It just depends on, you know, once we get our design team in here and really get down to getting soil samples and figuring out how everything's going to lay out, and get it all, get it all going.
Mike, could you confirm for the public that if, if the county did move forward with the assistance you're requesting, that any future maintenance, operation calls, upgrades, or whatever would be Smithfield's responsibility?
Yeah, it's, it's town-owned, and it's town responsibility. You know, we, we have tourism dollars coming in too, and we anticipate using some of those dollars for maintenance of the project. So yes, all of that is responsibility to town. Also wanted to point out, too, that the dollars that we're asking from the county will go towards physical infrastructure, of the stadium itself. It's not going to, any of it's going to go anywhere towards the design-build firm or any of the other ancillary contracts, it's going to go into infrastructure, physical infrastructure.
Anything else?
Mr. Scott, what specifically are you asking the county to do at this time?
What am I asking?
Yes, what?
I'm asking the town to partner, or the county to partner with the town to help build the stadium at a tune of putting in $1 million for the infrastructure this current fiscal year, and $1 million into the physical infrastructure next fiscal year, so basically in July.
And do you anticipate that is the, the upper limit of what you would be asking from the county?
Yes.
All right. I did want to recognize Councilman Roger Wood. Thank you for, thank you for being here this morning. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment. I would like to see us put, add this as an item to this evening's agenda so that we can go ahead and make a decision on this and move forward, and so these folks can, can move forward with their project, either, either with us or without us. But I appreciate all the information, presentation, and we've had a lot of conversation, a lot of discussions about this, and it's, does certainly seem like a great opportunity. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item is a presentation of budgets, middle policy, and apparatus replacement policy. And I think we have Fire Marshal Travis Johnson here, and Chief Chris Ellington as well to present to us on those.
Good morning. Thank you for your time this morning.
Good morning.
On the beginning of Fire Prevention Week, suitable time to bring something up to help the fire services out of the county. But I have Chris Ellington here, but I wanted to thank the committees and the fire chiefs that's come together to put these policies together. They've worked tremendously hard to get us a good product, and I'm sure you'll see that with Chris's presentation, but I'd like to thank them for their hard work and the commission as well. Chris?
Yeah, before Chris gets to talking to us, I did want to say, and this board has been able to listen to other counties and their desire to move forward on something similar to this, and we don't want to always hear the collaboration that we've heard along the way here, so did want to say thank you to all our chiefs and our staff and emergency services, Fire Marshal's Office, for, for being a part of that, because our experience has been entirely different from a lot of the folks that we've visited, and I think that is in large part to the cooperation and collaboration amongst the fire departments and the chiefs in particular to, to get us to where we are. So Chris, with that, I'll turn it over to you to introduce these two policies.
Good morning, Commissioner. Commissioner Law, you can add one more county that Davie County has reached out to me this morning, so they, they are definitely paying attention to what Johnston County has going on, and evidently, they see it as a good thing, so. It's been a while since the commission has been before you and given you an update, but we're still working on a lot of things, we have a lot of moving parts, and I use the illustration, if I could put the fire commission and just draw lines off of it on a wall, we would have a wall full of what's going on. You know, it would, it would be overwhelming to, to see every, all the parts coming together and what ties to another part. This morning, I'm going to start with apparatus replacement plan. We saw a need countywide that with, with the Fire Service Protection District being established, and that money being in one pot, if you will, that we needed to come up with a system to replace fire apparatus. Currently, how it was, when the fire department saw they had a replacement plan, they saw the need, they came before the commissioners and went and asked for financing, help, or financing, tax exempt loan status, financing. And that was just based on individual departments. But now we have 23 departments, if you will, pulling from that same pot, competing for those apparatus replacements, if you will. So we, we felt that we needed to come up with a system. And the objective of the apparatus replacement plan, and I won't go the line, the line for this, but I'm going to hit the highlights. It was to effectively and systematically, in a financially responsible manner, replace needed fire apparatus within Johnston County. We saw a great need across the county, and there's been a lot of apparatus replaced, and we've been very fortunate, but our first goal was to replace the 30-year-old apparatus. We saw that we still had many 30-year-old fire apparatus being relied upon that needed to be replaced. That was, that was one of our first goals. Our second was to collect data and get a baseline for the county. We had never had a, a good database of what the apparatus, apparatus inventory was. There was a lot, a lot of moving parts there, but we have got a good handle on that now. The third goal is to implement a countywide fire apparatus reserve program. That way, if a department has an apparatus go down, they can get an apparatus to keep that fire department going. And then completely, complete implementation of the apparatus replacement plan based on the recommended apparatus scoring metrics. When everything that we've done, we've tried to put it database, not opinion-based, we wanted it database. And the scoring apparatus, or the scoring metric is done by age of apparatus, mileage, engine hours, and repair costs. We separated out repair costs and maintenance costs. Everybody needs tires, batteries, oil changes, but repair cost is what we really wanted to focus on. What does it take to get an apparatus back on the road? That, that was where we were focused at. So that makes up our scoring metric and gives us a ranking of all fire apparatus in Johnston County. Operational considerations above that scoring metric need to be considered, because departments are, are ever evolving, the Fire Service of Johnston County, as you know, is changing, and the, these considerations need to be taken into, and there needs to be a part for them to, to come and say, hey, our, our needs have changed in our communities, our communities are changing, we need to, we need to move on the list, or we need to do something on the list. Those requests will be reviewed by the Fire Marshal's staff, and then it will go to the Budget Committee. So we'd still want to do that one time a year during budget. We wouldn't want to have a bunch of requests coming year, year after, time after time in these meetings. Emergency considerations were, is another thing we need to look at. If a department loses an apparatus and needs to find a quick, I, I view this as like, you're going to buy a used apparatus, because you're not getting a new apparatus quick anymore. They're going to buy a used apparatus to get them through till they can get a good replacement. That would be an emergency consideration. That consideration would go to the Fire Marshal's Office, and then it would go to the Fire Commission to vet that before it would come before the commission, for final, final approval. It seems pretty simple. You, you would have thought with a three-page policy like that, we could have come up with it in about a week, but that has taken some time to get to that, especially with that scoring metric. But that is the, that is the gist of the apparatus replacement plan, and I would, I'd be glad to take any questions and see if I can, see if I can answer those for you, but that's our, that's our method, how we plan on moving forward to replace apparatus in Johnston County.
Any questions for the chief?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I had, in your discussions, if I had been against this plan after looking at it in much more detail and be a witness to the discussions, why would I be against it? What have you heard the negatives? What's the things you've had to overcome?
I would, I, I don't know why anyone would be against it, and from the taxpayer's perspective, because this is applying data to, to purchase an apparatus. It's not, hey, we want the new shiny fire truck. This is, hey, here's the reasons why we need the new shiny fire truck. We, we have a repair cost that is greater than the debt service would be. That, that's, that's been a lot of the department's method of buying new apparatuses. When you start paying a payment in, in repair costs annually, it's time to get rid of that truck and do something a little bit different, so. I really can't think of a negative to, to that.
If a truck is in a wreck, that would be one of those emergency situations.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, Cleveland, we're well-versed in, in that, so.
I know it's one of the goals is to replace any apparatus 30 years or older. About how many of those are in the county of being over 30 years?
I think that we have got them dwindled down to about eight.
Okay.
So that, that is, that is pretty good from where we started.
Yeah.
And the thing about the request to adopt this policy today does not come with the financial piece of it. We are, we are not encouraging departments to do anything about going out purchasing currently. What we want them to do, if they can afford that in their current budget, and it's identified on that plan, we'd, we'd let them proceed, but we're not asking for any funding to go towards this currently, so. I know that would be a question.
How does this factor into, let's say, a particular area or fire district has a lot of growth really fast, and, and they need, they need more equipment than they can, than they actually have at the time? How does this play into that?
Well, I, I think what you would see then is you would probably see maybe a substation request, and with that, it would probably include operational expenses of employees, apparatus, and things like that. So that would definitely be one of those operational considerations that we would look at. If you're adding a station officer, you're going to need a fire truck for it. And if you don't have that, that, that would go into the budget process.
Okay.
Having spent a lot of time with the, the fire folks, and I, I really want to commend Chief Ellington and our Fire Marshal and all the staff and the chiefs around the county. I mean, everybody's really done a great job in trying to think this thing through and make it data-driven, and I think that's the key going forward, to be efficient with the taxpayer dollars, is where everything we're doing is data-driven. And so when you look at this apparatus, and the other part that this does, it helps us identify, if a department has, and I'm not talking about any department, I'm going to use it hypothetically, if a department's got five engines in the bay, does that department actually need five engines, you know, based on the call volume and those type of things? So is this an opportunity that we perhaps would not replace one of those and, and bring that number down to help offset the, the repair costs and the maintenance of apparatus?
That, that is one thing that I failed to mention, is that apparatus replacement on engines would only be considered at a two-engine-per-station basis. So that would solve that five or six engines in a single fire station department, that, that would solve that problem.
And Chief, I think you, you laid it out very nicely, is that as you add additional stations, it requires the number of apparatus, but to have, you know, five engines sitting in one station, that's typically not going to be the situation going forward. But this gives us a really good way to, but with this policy and the next one that you're going to see, I would encourage the board to remember that this is a starting point, and like any other policy the county adopts.
Can be adopted.
It could be modified as time goes on, and as, as things come up and change, it gives us an opportunity to do that. But the Fire Commission's done a tremendous job in really trying to sit down and dive deep into these things and decide what, what is going to be the best and most efficient way of moving forward with this, and I think they've accomplished that with this policy.
And, and I would like to say that the Fire Commission would love to be able to take credit for this, but we, we put together subcommittees, and a subcommittee that handles apparatus has, has given us this policy, and then the Fire Commission has vetted that. But that is a very diverse group from all across the county, all department sizes, and anywhere from firefighters to chief officers, so we, we tried to spread that out and get an opinion from all across the county, and I, I think you, you see a good representation of that here.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
No, but, Mr. Chairman, I might add that Chief Ellington and, and Fire Marshal Johnson, Ryan Parker, Chief Stanley, all of them, I've been witness to several of the meetings they've had with municipalities about the cost sharing. They do a really good job. They're prepared, and
Absolutely.
There's a lot of information to digest, but I commend you guys for what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. You have brought objectivity to a budget process and transparency, which is something that government spending always needs to have, and you and all the chiefs have shown leadership that has been recognized across the state. That's why other counties are getting in touch with you. They want to emulate this leadership model, because it is for the public's benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And this will work because it came from them and not pushed down from us.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Do you, you want us to, will we here both, vote on both at the same time? Do you care?
That's a true pleasure. It does not bother me.
Let's just knock this one out.
Let's just knock this one out and hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve the apparatus replacement policy as presented.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, on to the budget policy.
All right, the budget policy. Everyone knows that moving to the Fire Service Protection District, part of the strategic plan was to go to a budgeting process. Before, departments had worked off of the tax rate, and we knew how much money we were gonna get, and a lot of departments would say, okay, this is what, this is what we need to work in. Moving forward, we're going to a needs-based approach, just like any other county department. We'll go to a budget process, we'll submit a budget. And I'll go through this again, and I'm gonna hit the highlights again. If you have any questions, I can wrap that up at the end. The purpose, the policy establishes a standardized process for preparation, submission, and review of annual budgets of Johnson County Fire Service agencies. Like I said, this is a, this is a new process. This will be, this will be how departments are funded versus a tax rate. The policy statement, the biggest thing in that is that each year, fire departments must turn in a budget to the Fire Marshal's office by March 15th. The budget preparation requirements, of course, they're gonna turn in the budget template. It's gonna be standardized across the county. Everyone will use the same line items. That way, they can be looked at a little bit easier. Year-to-date expense reports and current fund balance statements. One thing that we, is a lot different now, is we're gonna really look at the fire department fund balances. Presenting this to the fire chiefs, I expected a lot of apprehension, but there was really, was really not a lot of apprehension about the fund balance requirements. Required fund balances. Departments should maintain a fund balance of $150,000 with a budget less than $1 million. For those departments with budgets equal to or greater than $1 million, they should maintain a fund balance of 15%. We chose that million-dollar mark because at that million-dollar mark, a lot of the departments you're seeing with an over-million-dollar budget are incurring a lot of employee costs. And heaven forbid, should, should funding not be able to happen for, for any kind of crazy reason, for the county not be able to pay that month, we want that department to still be able to maintain their employees and still get a paycheck, because the one thing they do keep coming for is pay. So we want to make sure that we do that, and that's, that was the reasoning for the 15% over a million dollars. And we have budgets from $300,000 all the way to $6.5 million in Johnson County, so we're very diverse, and we had to, we had to look at that across, across the county and try to pick a metrics that would work for everyone, so. That's why we chose those. Fund balances are meant to cover operating expenses, as known as unrestricted fund balances. Designated fund balances would be funds set aside for capital projects or emergency funds. And that's what we're referring to, that $150,000 or 15%, that is gonna be the designated fund balance. That's kind of a, we don't like to use the word restricted, but I'll use it here, is the restricted money that we want to see you hold for those rainy days or those emergencies that come up. One important thing I'd like to point out is fund balances do not include restricted funds, such as the relief fund money. That relief fund money is mandated by the state how that is spent. And then there's some liabilities with some USDA funding, and there's departments that have those loans, and USDA requires them to keep a certain amount of money for each one of those loans in the bank that they can't touch. So we don't want to take that into consideration for their fund balance when we're doing that Skipping number five, that's just the budget template. That's the standardized form that we'll all fill out. Submission and review process, like I mentioned, no later than March 15th, all departments should have a budget submitted. The initial review will be done by the Fire Marshal's office, and then that'll move to the Budget Committee for the review, and I'll go through how the Budget Committee is made up. The committee will be composed of three Fire Service Representatives appointed by the Fire Commission Chair, two representatives from the Fire Marshal's Division, one representative from Johnson County Finance Office, and one representative from Johnson County Internal Audit Office. There'll be some expatio members, that will be the Johnson County Commissioner, which is the Fire Commissioner, Johnson County Emergency Services Director and Deputy Director, and the Johnson County Emergency Services Financial Operations Manager. Expatio members won't be voting members on that committee. They'll, they'll be sitting in for, for reference, for, for, you know, helping us, helping us understand that budget or looking into it a little bit deeper, so. We did that so that getting a quorum would be a little bit easier. There will be a time for departments, if there's feedback that needs to happen, or the department wants to come and do a budget presentation, there will be times allotted for that, so they don't just turn them in and don't get a say and don't get to tell us why. Obviously, we would probably send back and ask for questions, but there will be a time for the Fire Chief to come in and present his budget, should he want to. The Budget Committee recommendation will go to the county, to the county Finance Director and the County Manager no later than May 1st. And then, of course, the final approval will be the Commissioners. Another big change is the quarterly review. We're going to step, we'll still keep the annual audit that we do every year, but we'll also include quarterly reviews by the Finance Office. And that is, that is just, as Commissioner Stubbeall mentioned, that's bringing more transparency, more oversight to these budgets, and just so we can also do future planning. That is gonna be probably our largest transition going into this, is you still have a lot of departments out there that have in-house treasure. I foresee one thing we go, when we go to budgets, you're gonna see is a CPA line item in budgets, because that's gonna, that's gonna push them. The requirements are gonna push them towards CPAs, which may or may not be a bad thing, but it, it will be a little bit easier for the Finance Office to get those reports, I think, than that does happen. Noncompliance, I don't think we'll have an issue with getting budgets by the 15th, so that's really a moot point. And then, we can adjust this policy, as mentioned. If we're gonna do that, we want to do it by January 1st of each year. But if there's any questions, I can go back through and clear up, or any questions you have in addition to what I, what I stated here, I'd be glad to go back through and answer those.
All right, any questions for the chief?
I've got one, Mr. Chairman. Based on feedback from the towns, is it, is it possible, and it may not be, is it possible to, to speed that May 1st date up any because of towns' consideration? Knowing where we're at, you know, like April 15th is that unrealistic for you guys, you think?
I don't, I don't think it would be. And it would depend on how many presentations we needed to hear from the fire chiefs and their availability, and the committee's availability, honestly, so.
I guess it also may depend on what the towns decide to do.
One thing, and I don't want to jump ahead, but one thing we have heard going through cost share with the towns is knowing that number, that they're gonna be responding for a little bit earlier than the last, last week or two of June. That has been, almost every department, every town has said that they need that number a little bit sooner than that, so. But I think we probably could, we might could get it to April 15th. I just, I would hate to not give a department an opportunity to come and present a budget they want.
I got you.
All right, any other questions?
I did have one for our financial officer that we probably should have asked, and I just want to see if you nodded and you're in agreement, I'm assuming you are, since they've got this far with it, but what are your thoughts on actually both these policies?
Yes, I'm in agreement. Obviously, nothing's ever perfect, but this is a good starting point. I think it's something that is gonna push them forward and get us to where we need to be. Obviously, our office will review everything that comes down and make sure we stay within the bounds of whatever the fire tax rate is and make sure we have a rainy day policy system-wide, and to make sure we give our firemen what they need to operate and look at for services.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a comment. I think, again, this has been a great process, and I think it's, it's gonna do a lot of things. One, it's gonna take a lot of pressure off of the local fire departments, because they're financing, they're budgeting, there's a lot of things that they, that chief won't have to worry about anymore because it's gonna be contained within this policy. The other thing that was really important to me going forward is to make sure that the communities understand, those departments that have large fund balances, the county's not taking that money away from them. That money was generated in that district, it's gonna stay in that district. What we will do, though, is adjust their budget accordingly so that they can spin down that to get to the levels that have been adopted and recommended by the Fire Commission. So I think that's just an important thing going forward, because, you know, we're not going in there taking money. But I think if you look at the fact, what Chief Ellington alluded to, that we had some departments that had $6 million in the bank, and some departments had less than $100,000, that in itself illustrates the dire need to do what we're doing with this process. And I think that this, this entire process that we started, that everybody around the state's starting to pick up on and look at, everybody's in the same boat, because different areas of the county generate tax revenue differently. And so I think this is a great way to move it, and ultimately, what will happen is, is this would be included in the County Manager's budget proposal to the, to the board, and so we're not, this board won't have to vote on every single budget. It'll be just part of the manager's budget proposal after it's been vetted and so forth, so.
I just also wanted to make a comment, that I know that fire station feasibility study is also about, is coming up, and with EMS and everything, so I think this is, having this in place is definitely gonna be helping to the future of knowing where fire stations might need to be, and then also being able to help budget when a new fire station might be coming on, coming on, and then following up with the apparatus to make sure that there's a fire truck in that fire station. So I think this is very forward-thinking of the county and then hoping with the needs of the county in the next five, 10, 15 years.
One thing I would add is, through this whole process, what we've done, what I see is with these policies we're creating and drafting, is we're creating that roadmap for budgets. We're creating that roadmap, be able to project into the future five, 10 years of what the Fire Service of Johnson County needs to look like.
Right.
And that's something that we really didn't have a good grasp on before, but I think that's, one of the things that's so attractive to other counties as well.
All right, if we're motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll move to approve the annual budget process policy as presented by the Chairman of the Fire Commission.
A second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Outstanding. I would say, please share your thanks from the board, to your, your board, your commission, and also the subcommittees for all the work they put in on this, and still to go on it, so. All right, the next item is requests for eight positions to staff EMS 16 at Wilson Mills Fire Station Number Three, and we have Chief Ted Hardy here to present to us on this item as well as the next one, so. Chief Hardy, good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good one. Hope everyone's well today. I appreciate the opportunity to stand up here and represent Johnson County Emergency Services EMS Division. Your support over the years has helped us be able to deliver on our mission to provide excellent care and quality service to the citizens of Johnson County, so just want to make sure that, you know, y'all know how important your support is. So the first item on our list is a request to add eight positions to staff a 24-hour unit that is going to be placed at Wilson's Mills Station Three, that is currently in development. The funds for these positions already exist in this year's budget, but we'd held off asking to request those positions until we had a more firm timeline on the station being completed. The station's most likely gonna be completed before the end of this year, so we're going to, we would like to go ahead and add these positions so that we can get them staffed, get the employees onboarded, and have them ready for when the station opens. Happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have about this one.
Any questions for Chief Hardy?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the additional positions as presented by Chief Hardy.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
We're growing county.
Motion carries. All right, the next request is to approve contracts with Assistant Medical Directors. So Chief Hardy?
Yes, absolutely. So again, along with the growth of our county, so in the last 10 to 15 years, we've doubled the call volume in our county. Our projections moving forward will probably be up over 40,000 calls by the end of this decade, probably looking at 50,000 within, probably by 2035. So in January, our longtime medical director, Dr. Hartman, retired. Our assistant medical director, Dr. McCaskill, moved into his position, so we had a vacancy in our assistant medical director position since that time. Along with our growth of our county, it includes more, more field providers, which needs more clinical oversight, so we're actually requesting to add two assistant medical directors, Dr. John Wooton and Dr. Andrew Mealan. We had anticipated a larger need for involvement from our assistant medical directors in this year's budget, so the funds to fund these positions already exist in our budget because we were expecting there'd be a bigger role for them as our system continues to grow.
I have a question.
Any questions?
Is that on an as-needed basis?
They are, yes, sir. So our assistant medical directors generally do not provide, they usually backfill the medical director. One of the things that we would like to add with these, these assistants is we would like them to provide four hours of office time per week, which would help give us more office hours out of our medical directors. Dr. McCaskill's currently in the office three days a week, and we would like them to take turns doing one day a week.
That's good.
So it'd give us more clinical oversight on a day-to-day basis.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that this recommendation comes with a recommendation from Dr. McCaskill. I have a lot of confidence in him, so I'd support it. I move that we approve the contracts.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir. Just a few brief comments. I think we were very fortunate to get Dr. McCaskill. I think he does an extraordinary job, and I echo that, Mr. Goblin. And I also am familiar with Dr. Wooton, as he currently serves as the medical director for Johnston Community College for the training programs, which honestly, bringing him on as an assistant is gonna give us a nice tie together, because Johnston Community Colleges is providing the training for Johnston County Emergency Services, so it's really, it really works out well that way, and I think, so I think we're gonna be in a good place. I also just want to commend you, Chief, for the EMS system that we have in place, our deputy director back there, all the emergency services staff, Director Parker. We are really blessed to have a great system, and it's really second to none. I spent a lot of years in firing EMS and rescue, and to see what Johnson County has today is really phenomenal, and the lives that are saved, and the lives that people are walking around today as a result of the fact that the work that you're doing in the field is just unbelievable. So, well done, and I appreciate what you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir. All right, next up, we have our Utilities Director, Chandra Farmer, to present to us on Newt River wastewater pump station improvements.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We were talking earlier about 4H. One of the best things I have ever done in my life was participated as a youth in 4H. I did that for many years, and I gained a lot of skills that I would not have gained otherwise that helped me tremendously when I was applying for scholarships for college throughout college and with my career, so. Prepared me for moments like this. But we're speaking.
And you wore green, too. And you wore your green, too.
Yes, I did wear my green today.
How did we not get that?
I know.
Green with envy.
Yeah.
This morning, I would like to talk about our Newt River wastewater pump station improvements project. This is a project that is on our capital improvements plan, has been under design for some time, and this project is an existing wastewater pump station that's located on US Highway 301 next to the Newt River here in Smithfield. You may have seen the building. There are cracks through that existing building. We provided a picture of that in your agenda packet and a map to show you the existing site location. The proposed project will upgrade the station for additional capacity and relocate it out of that floodplain area, out further away there from the Newt River. There's a map that shows that proposed location as well. And we have bid the project. We received three bids on the project. The lowest bid was from Sanford Contractors in the amount of $4,581,444.10. We have also received a funding offer from the State Division of Water Infrastructure for an SRF loan, 2.04% for 20 years. The total loan amount is $8,960,000, and the loan is intended to fund two phases of this. The pump station relocation and improvements are contract number one, and So with the proposed project, we would like to go ahead and accept that loan and include a portion of that in this project budget for this contract number one. You can see the project, the proposed project budget there in front of you. That includes all of the technical services, construction, contingency, loan closing, all of that, and the funding for it, which is mostly from the SRF loan. There's a small payment we received from NC DOT for the existing pump station, the existing pump station site. They'll be acquiring part of that as, there right away. And then some fund balance from Fund 68, our sewer fund. So we recommend acceptance of the funding offer from DWI, which there's a resolution in your packet to accept that. Award of the project to Sanford Contractors in the amount I stated earlier, which will be contingent upon the DWI approval. There's also a resolution for that. Approval of the revised project budget and approval of the capital project ordinance. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Any questions for Ms. Farmer?
I have one question. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Farmer, the approval from DEQ, DWI, what exactly are they approving here?
They're ensuring that all of our bid documents met all of their requirements and that our award is consistent with their requirements.
Okay, thank you.
And is that because of it being in the Newt River Basin?
No, it's just their funding requirements such as MBE, DBE participation, and there are certain conditions we have to make sure we include in the contract, in the contracts, and they want to make sure all of that's in place, as it should be, before they issue our final okay.
All right, any other questions?
Just a comment. It amazed me how much this stuff costs. Of course, you see that all the time.
Unfortunately, it has increased recently.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request to accept the funding offer from DEQ and DWI. Award the Newt River wastewater pump station replacement project to Sanford Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $4,581,444.10, contingent upon DEQ, DWI approval. Approve the revised project budget and the capital project ordinance.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is request for additional funding for Phase One of the Johnston County Regional Park. And we have Mr. Adrian O'Neil here to present to us on that.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks for having me. We've come to you today, we've gotten all of our bids in, all of our amounts in, and got all the grants that we can muster together. We, the total cost for Phase One of the Johnston County Regional Park is $4,352,918. That does include the designing, which we've already paid for some of that in last year's appropriation. And to date, we have $3,196,359 available through grants, reimbursements, and open space funding for that area. We have a part-of-grant that equals half a million dollars. We have a reimbursement for LWCF, which equals a half a million dollars. We have a LWCF, which is Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, which is half a million dollars for construction of this project. We have a reimbursement coming, which is from North Carolina Land and Water Fund, which is 1.1 and a little bit million dollars. And then from the Cleveland Open Space Fund, we have a little over $580,000 available. That leaves approximately $835,421 to be funded, and we are hoping that that can come from the county budget, and we will be able to reimburse that through the Cleveland Open Space Funds. It will take approximately five to six years to do that, and along that time, we'll still be working on other avenues to try to throw funding in there and save funding from Open Space Funds. But that's what we're bringing forward now, along with the capital project ordinance for the regional park. This will be Phase One. Phase One does include four pickleball courts, outdoor basketball courts, picnic shelter, fishing pond, a lot of the entry work, and a lot of the underground work that's going to come with the park.
All right, any questions for Mr. O'Neil?
What was the timeline estimated about it?
We have to have it done by November of next year.
Okay.
It'll be pretty quick.
Yeah.
We've heard some discussion, Mr. Chairman, from various people around the county about, well, we've heard a lot of discussion, we need, we need a park. County doesn't have one. And we've got a lot of people who are not in municipalities, but in a very dense setting, if you will. And I've heard some folks mention maybe they're a long way from this location to say, why should we support a park over there? But I guess if you're ever going to have any parks anywhere, you got to have the first one somewhere, and it can't be everywhere. So this is our first step.
Well, Commissioner Galvin, the one thing that I like about this proposal is that we've often talked about our virtual cities that are out in the countryside not having a taxing mechanism, but with the fee in lieu that Adrian's talking about from the Cleveland School District, that, that area would actually pay for this park over time. So if the general fund fronts this money, which I do feel is important and imperative that we do that so that we don't lose other grant money that's already tied up, that over time, the Cleveland area fee in lieu will actually replenish this fund balance. So people that are from other parts of the county who might be worried about their tax money going to pay for a Cleveland park actually is not the case. So I do like this proposal.
Chairman, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion to approve the request for additional funding in the amount of $850,000 for the Phase One Johnston County Regional Park and approve the capital project ordinance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just one thing. Without our top-notch staff, I don't think we'd be where we are.
That's right.
Amen.
Correct.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I know to ask is $850,000. I'm looking at this Section 4 of the following revenues anticipated be available to complete the project, and it's got open space appropriation, 58249. That's a state appropriation, is it not?
No, sir. That's, that's open space funds. That's our fee in lieu money from Cleveland.
All right. General fund appropriation, $2,576,953.
That, that number does include the North Carolina Land and Water Fund monies and the reimbursement from the purpose of the park, $500,000.
So where does the $850,000 fit into this sum here?
It would go into that, the line you just mentioned.
The general fund appropriation?
Yes, sir. And there are some of the invoices that have come since the budget years come through from the design of the park or of the park.
All right, and you talked about we're using a fee in lieu of open space that developers typically pay to, as a fun exhaustless park.
Yes, sir.
And how much is that fund covering overall out of this?
It'll be the initial 582, and let's see, let me get my numbers right here, 582. And then on top of that, the reimbursement of the $850,000.
$850,000. All right, so if the $850,000 is in the 2.5 million, the balance of these funds, have they been previously approved?
The balance of...
You said the $850 was in that number?
Yes, sir. That, that's...
It should be about 1.65 million that's, that's left, and that's why I might have that question, too. Is that general fund dollars that, you mentioned something about the land and water being in there?
We had, they will be general fund dollars until they're reimbursed, yes, sir.
Right. He's gotten other sources, so other sources of that, he's gotten other sources that goes within that 2.5 million that he's going to get reimbursed from. So we're going to spend it, get reimbursed. The only thing we have left that won't be reimbursed is the $850,000 he's talking. That will be true county dollars that won't be reimbursed, that is strictly, that's what he's asking for today.
Okay. So that's, I think that's the question we were getting at, is how much is actually coming out of the general fund? But we will get reimbursed for what you showed in the...
That is, that's correct.
And I would just, I just wanted to add, too, you had mentioned five to six years to pay it back, and I'm a little bit concerned that if we take 100% of their money for, if there are other improvements that other recreation facilities or groups need during that five to six years, there won't be any available. So if, if it's agreeable to the board and our financial officer thinks it's okay to spread that out to maybe 10 years so that there's some dollars in there in case there are other needs during this period.
I'd also like to point out, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
That this was also one of our goals back when we had our planning session. This was on our priority list. So it's really neat seeing even something that may have been lower at the end, still being able to be talked about and come before the board. So really neat to be able to see a lot of goals being accomplished this year.
Mr. McLam, just correct, help me make sure that I'm correct in saying this. This entire project from the very beginning has been a series of allocations with reimbursements back. Is that, is that right? Because we funded the amount to buy the land to begin with, and then it was reimbursed back by grant opportunities. So this has been a series of funding through the general fund and then reimbursement back to the general fund. Is that right? Is that a correct statement? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, man, I would just say to Commissioner Stovall's point that these dollars were raised in the Cleveland High School District and are being spent in that district. So to me, that's, and that's also paid for by the development community as they bring on properties and pay that fee in lieu, so.
And the last thing I'd like to add, without this appropriation, there's about a million and a half dollars of grant money that we would lose.
Correct.
So that's very important.
Is this $850 subject to reimbursement in that period?
It'll be reimbursed from, reimbursed from the open space fund.
Open space funding.
For that area, for Cleveland, over the 10 years.
Over the 10 years. So the county's general fund will be made whole in that respect.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yes.
That's, I know this has been an arduous process, and there's been in the past several efforts to try to either have encouraged the Cleveland area to incorporate as a town or to agree to a special tax district that would pay for this park, but there has been strong resistance to doing that, which is unfortunate because it becomes a burden on the county taxpayers. But as long as we're getting reimbursed here, I'm comfortable that this is, this is a good expenditure of money.
All right.
And basically, we're letting the development pay for it. They're paying the fee in lieu of open space. You've got developers who are coming in and actually paying for this, this park over time. And this was one of our priorities that we determined at our planning retreat earlier in the year. We had 19 capital priorities, even though this one was, was, I think, number 19, it is a priority for the commissioners. So I want to make sure that's in the record.
And I will add, we're working on other things throughout the county. We have several other projects underway, so even though this is the first, there's going to be a lot coming pretty quick, and we're glad to see those and hope we can answer that question that Mr. Galvin had about where, where is it going to be at and how's it affect me?
Well, I want to compliment you and your staff for pursuing grants and means to mitigate the money that the county is having to put into this because we don't have any other alternate funding source for that location. That's very important for the health of our general fund.
All right, any other comments?
Do I need to do anything with my motion with regards to what you were saying with the timeframe?
Are we good, counsel? She asked if she needed, she needed to change anything in her motion with regard to the timeframe?
No, sir, I don't think so because we can account for that in the budgeting process.
Okay. All right. And all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You standing up here for the next one, or is Austin?
Austin's going to come up. Austin Cross will be coming up.
All right. And this is request to approve contract for Newt River Trail, the Wilson Mills Greenway.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So you know, for the last few years, we've been working on this project. It's our first segment of the Newt River Trail that Johnston County will be constructing. Though it's in Wilson Mills, I think it'll serve a good purpose. The project that we are going for is about a mile and a half greenway that'll connect a future neighborhood, a passive park that will be constructed by such developer and other developments along the way, including the future Wilson Mills High School and middle school site when that's constructed. This will be the first phase of that. Our intended goal is to kind of move towards Smithfield is what it's looking like for right now, but this is the first phase. We got funding from the carbon reduction program in the amount of $4.2 million with other funding sources in there. So in working with NC DOT, we have scored and selected McAdams Company to be the design engineer firm for this in the amount of $287,203.31. With that, we would like to respectfully ask the board to execute the contract and as well as approve the capital project ordinance. And with that, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Cross?
That DOT was under their bike pit program.
Yes. It's funding technically coming from the IIJA Federal Appropriation. So we work with Federal Highway Administration as well to give it...
The local match requirement from the county open space funds, is that a, what is the percentage? Is that whatever we get in appropriation, we have to match that equally in dollar value?
So the carbon reduction, we have to match up to 20%. With that, we have the complete the trails program, which they're going to put up, it's roughly about on $850,000 we'd have to match. Carbon reduction is going to put up $600,000, or complete the trails program is putting up $600,000. The remaining $250,000 will come from open space funds.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to make sure, so out of the 4.2 million, how much is coming from open space total?
$250,000.
Okay, wow.
And it's up to 4.2, so if construction comes in lower, then the match will come in lower as well.
That's awesome.
I think this also is really great with how it aligns with our just adopted transportation plan, so it works out great.
And we're working on our comprehensive trails plan, which will be an addendum to that plan as well.
Yep.
So I'll be identified, and it all makes sense in 10 years when we have a full alignment going.
Yep.
And I think the piece that ties with this, and I haven't done this yet, but we have Aaron Mullins with the Tourism Bureau, the, I guess, executive director, such official title here. So as we complete trails from Clayton to Wilson Mills and tie into Smithfield and then go beyond, it'll be an opportunity, and I know he's very familiar with trails and bike pit things coming from where he did, so we look forward to tying tourism in with parks in the open space greenway program, so.
Absolutely. We hope the Newt River Trail can do well for the Razorback Trail where he came from.
Yes, yes.
It will be in par with what Raleigh's got in Wake County, and we'll continue on down along with new trails as well.
Very good. All right.
You ready for a motion?
I think so.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the contract for the Newt River Trail, Wilson Mills Greenway, and the capital project ordinance.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Continuing on, we have conservation easement for Little River Forest property, and we have several folks from the... And we have several folks from the Triangle Land Conservancy, one of our partners in land preservation here. So good to see y'all.
Good to see you too. Thanks so much for having us this morning. We brought the whole Johnson County crew.
Yeah. See that?
And this is our only county out of our six where we have three people dedicated to us. You appreciate the partnership and we especially appreciate the partnership with Adrian and Austin. They've been great folks to work with and the ability to get things like carbon reduction grants, I don't think that can be underestimated, the great work they're doing in the county.
So it's the three because we're such a challenge because so much opportunity, so much opportunity.
So much opportunity.
Okay.
You're also our largest county.
Sounds better anyway. Yeah, it does.
Anyways, we are here today just to thank you and celebrate a closing on the Little River. As you all know, Triangle Land Conservancy is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We've been around since nineteen eighty-three and during that time have helped protect over twenty-six thousand acres of land. We recently, just last week, closed a project on the Little River that Melissa's going to give you more details on and also have two additional projects we plan to close this year in the county. To date, since twenty twenty-two, when you gave us the first appropriation in the budget, we have closed nine projects. Technically, I think ten if you count Rose Dairy. And so that previous commitment of close to two million dollars has been allocated for over two thousand acres in the county valued at over twenty million dollars. This year's commitment of close to one point four million will protect an additional eight hundred and sixty-seven acres valued at eight point five million dollars. Brenna, we'll give you an update, but we had some great news last week as well that it's going to help protect close to a thousand acres in Johnson County. So the county commitment has really been instrumental. A lot of especially our state funding sources, having that commitment in the annual budget has enabled us to leverage additional dollars and really prioritize our work across the state. Today, we're going to focus specifically on the Little River. It's one of the most scenic and pristine rivers, it says, in Johnson County, I believe in the entire state of North Carolina. It's an incredible resource. The Natural Heritage Program has designated it as an exceptional aquatic habitat and it's home to, I believe, five endangered mussel species and as well as the Carolina mantom. And to date, TLC has protected over eight hundred acres on the Little River with more projects in progress. So I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Clunin to talk about our most recent acquisition.
Thank you. Yeah. So like Leanne said, we just closed on a project on the Little River called the Little River Forest. And so that was at the end of September on the twenty-third, just a week or two ago. And this property is just under seventy acres of some mixed forest and wetland areas along the river. So I think the agenda says easement. This was actually a fee simple purchase. So it is in TLC's ownership and was a partnership with, of course, the county support that we are so grateful for, as well as the state land and water fund and some landowner bargain sale. So the county funds were leveraged with over four hundred and sixty thousand additional dollars between that state grant and bargain sale. And the property has almost half a mile of fringe along the Little River. And like Leanne said, just an exceptional natural heritage area with a lot of endangered species. So we're really excited about this one. And I wanted to highlight another project, there we go, that y'all have seen before and approved funding for earlier this year that is just downstream, also on the Little River, called the Johnson Farm. So this property is one that, as Leanne alluded to as well, the county funding was absolutely critical for. And the main point I wanted to highlight here is that we put in for a grant at the end of the year for this project for the state ag trust fund, which is becoming increasingly competitive. There are only, I believe, eight projects funded this year out of a hundred applications, and this was one of them. And that is largely in part to the county funding commitment. So really grateful for your support and that this will contribute to our corridor along the Little River.
Just wanted to quickly give you an update on what's coming next for Triangle Land Conservancy. We have three projects that we're looking to close in the next couple of months. The Parish Farm is a thirty acre working lands easement, hundred percent prime soils with some hay field and livestock. That's in Benson. In the Buffalo Creek Wetlands is a sixty-two acre donation of a wetland and bottom land forest along Buffalo Creek. That's kind of in the Clayton area. And then lastly, we have the Carter Farm, which is a sixty acre donation of a working lands easement on a farm near Selma. So we're looking to close all of those by January. These are projects we've already dedicated funding for, again, mostly donations, but very excited to have these upcoming land projects. And I know you've heard a number of times now about Rose Dairy, which is three hundred and ten acres of farm and forest near Four Oaks. We've already purchased it last year and we've been working to secure, well, we have the funding. We've been working to go through the review process with the land and water fund to get them to release their funding. And we're hoping to transfer that property to the county early next year, once that funding is approved for release. And then just last week, as Leanne said, we got the notifications from North Carolina Land and Water Fund. We had two amazing projects funded. They ranked number four and number five in the entire state. The Newt River Islands is eight hundred acres of mature bottom land hardwood forest. It's a designated natural heritage area. And then the Williamson addition, TLC's Williamson Preserve from the Wake-Johnson County border will be expanded by sixty-seven acres and a portion of that is in Johnson County. Thank you all for the county's support. It has been truly game changing for enable us to get these state funds to project to fruition. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all. I have a question. Where you've actually taken ownership of the land, have you marked it? Does it have any identifying markers on the land?
Yes. So the property that we own, we do put Triangle Land Conservancy conservation signs around the property boundary.
Is it visible along the river?
Yeah. The signs are kind of small. I will warn you. So you have to look a little closely.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I had a question. This might be more for staff than for y'all. Will this be noted on GIS as part of either like in yellow with, I know voluntary ag districts are yellow. Would this also be highlighted that, would it be in conservation land on the maps with GIS?
We may hang a layer with GIS.
Okay. Okay.
So now that we've got off on a side trail here.
Sorry.
So is that, is that a layer that the public could click on and, and see the land that we've preserved?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at.
Whether it's, whether it's conservation easement or TLC, I think that would be very interesting to.
It's primarily internal acre, internal document right now, but we can probably make it available to everybody.
I think it'd be worthwhile for sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be useful.
Some of the things that TLC is working on may not get on there because it.
Right. That's fine.
I wouldn't do it until it closed.
Yeah, until it closed.
Yeah, yeah. No, yeah, I'm just talking about the stuff that's.
Already in there.
It's got signs up on it already.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay.
I was thinking of how whenever you're on GIS, how the yellow in the voluntary ag district's so prominent if you, we had a different, either a different color or if they were yellow as well, just for people to know the land that's in the conservation.
Yeah. And many of our working lands easements actually are in the voluntary agricultural district.
Very good.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? No, just thank y'all again for all you do and the hard work. I mean, I know why it takes three people because it takes, these don't happen overnight and this takes a long time to, to pull it all together and work on it. So thank you for your perseverance on all the efforts you do.
And I'm going to ask you again, just for the public that's watching, if someone wants to talk to you about potentially having their, their property purchased by the Triangle Land Conservancy, how can they reach out to you?
Yeah. The best way is to get to our website, www.triangoland.org. But my email is also up here and you're welcome to reach out to anyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Oh, you did burn us some early.
Thank you. All right. The next item is cost of community services economic model proposal. And Mr. Hester, you want to give us an update on that?
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
You may recall back at the board strategic work session back in the, about six months ago, we actually had a presentation on cost of community services and then followed back up with a proposal in last month. Crystal Morpheus with Creative Economic Consulting made a presentation to the board about a two-part review for Johnson County and totaled not to exceed seventy-three nine oh five. That would be the cost of community services plus the local fiscal impact model. So we recommend the board approve that.
All right. Any, any discussion on that? I'll just say that it's, we, we did hear from Dr. Dorfman with NC State at our retreat. And I think that, that was eye opening, you know, some of the things he said, not so much the results of the cost of the actual services, but the ability to, to develop an economic model for decision making. And I think that's, for me, I know that that's a big deal because for, for the seven years I've been sitting up here, I've heard, you know, the services, but I haven't found any county that's other than do the, do the report and it's set on the shelf. And for us, and I think Ms. Morpheus kind of indicated that we would be one of the few that are taking that to the next level and use it to make decisions. So I'm looking forward to that part. I know we got to have them both to get there, but I'm, I'm excited about having the possibility to help us make decisions with, we talked about data driven and economic data driven that we will finally be getting to that point, I believe, was about the end of the February, I'll see, February twenty-sixth. So any other comments?
I was just going to add that I know this has been something that a lot of citizens have been requesting for several years. So I'm excited to see of us taking that step and going forward with it and not using it and setting it on a shelf.
And this is something that our Citizens Advisory Committee that worked on the land use plan, one of their recommendations to the commissioners, I'm very pleased to see to get to this stage. I believe this is critical information that will tell us how we need to achieve balance in our tax base so that we can keep property taxes reasonable for our citizens because we know that these studies have shown that residential loan is, does not generate net positive revenue. You've got to have job producing growth. Dr. Dorfman pointed out to us, you know, we, we currently have seventy-nine percent of our county leaves the county every day to work elsewhere. And that's something that we need to try to turn around. And I know Chris Johnson said he's making that his, his top priority, try to get that number back to where it needs to be. So I fully support this.
Are any of our municipalities doing anything similar? Or I know we had reached out to them at one point and some were interested, but I know that our data will, will necessarily be work for them and vice versa. But I didn't know if there was an opportunity to reach out to some of our municipalities and maybe they could, they could jump in and, and do this because I'm sure there's going to be some overlap.
And I'm glad to reach out to them and see if they'd like to tag along on this.
Yeah. I think the Clayton is using Ms. Morpheus and her firm for another spin. I think it's more economic development that she's using. And I know we did this, I think we discussed that at a retreat is, you know, do we bring towns in? And I, I think we said, let's get ourselves in order, then we can bring those in. It's probably going to be difficult enough with just us, with much less potentially eleven, eleven towns. But I think at some point, it seems reasonable to think that they could all be tied together because what the towns' decisions they make impact the county's resources. So.
Yes. We can make, make them aware that if the board does approve, make them aware that this is in process.
That'd be aspirational goals to have to participate in some point.
We're building a foundation for future collaboration with the municipalities is what we're doing.
There you go.
Can we quote you on that?
Yeah. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the, moving forward with the cost of community services and local fiscal impact model projects.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right. This morning, the next is, item is appoint, board appointments. We made several in the consent agenda this morning. Those were boards that had the appropriate number of applicants for open positions or maybe some that were, were fewer. Each one of the commissioners has at their seat a ballot for boards that had more applicants than we had positions available. And I'm not going to read all the information in here, but the alcoholic beverage control board has one position with eight applicants. Child fatality prevention team has one position with five applicants. The fire protection service district commission has three positions with six applicants. The planning board has one position and four applicants for consideration. And the tourism authority has one position with three applicants. So the commissioners will fill those ballots out, turn them into the clerk, and I will announce the results at the, the meeting at six o'clock tonight at the beginning of the meeting. So with that, we'll call our tax administrator, Justin Andrews, to come forward and give us our delinquent tax collection report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and commissioners.
Good morning.
For you is the August collections report. As you can see, we're, we're trending a little higher percentage wise than we did in the previous year for the regular levy and then we are about the same as far as registered motor vehicle. This, just for, so you kind of see where we are on the calendar here. This does not, because this is the August collection report, it does not include the public service billings yet. That will be in next month's report because that was actually billed out in September. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
I understand you're starting your eighth year this month here.
Yes, sir.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Manager report and comments.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would also like to say four H played a big, four H played a big part of my life growing up too in Lake County. So a lot of four H recognition today, likely so. I did want to recognize Scott Boljack who's joined the public information team and is going to be a great addition to Johnson County.
All right. Yeah. All right. Anything else? All right. I will now move on to board reports and comments. And Commissioner Godwin, I'll start with you.
The only thing I want to report, Mr. Chairman, is earlier today, I read the resolution supporting the green light program for the veterans. And I would just urge all the citizens and the municipalities to take that to heart. I've ridden around the county and, you know, that we put green lights here on the courthouse. And there's a few neighbors of mine, I've seen green lights. And I must say, it's encouraging for veterans to see that. So let's all take it to heart and put that green light out. My, my wife asked me this morning, mentioned it. She said, do you know where our green light is? I said, yes, I do. I'll get it up today.
All right. Commissioner Stovall?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Following on the national four H four week proclamation, that's a very appropriate time to recognize that this board will approve allowing us to expand our archery range out at the landfill to include firearms for the four H shooting sports program. And that's very important because we, this program's been in existence since two thousand and two, and we've had to, it's a very popular program. We've had to curtail the enrollment for the last several years because it's basically a lack of time and facilities to be able to manage those numbers. And this board graciously allowed us to expand the program at the landfill by adding the firearm portion, which required that we had to build the necessary safety berms. And it took about, we calculated it was going to be about 1,000 cubic yards of soil that would have to be placed in order to provide the necessary backstop berms and, and side berms for protection. Well, as, as a volunteer organization with very little resources, you know, we were certainly glad to get the approval, but our next challenge is how do we get the soil there and how do we place it? And Mr. Hester, working through with our landfill manager, Mr. Brian Basely, and his equipment operator, Mr. Andrew Brazwell, and other folks at the landfill, they stepped up and says, "We can do this job for you. We've got spoiled soil left over from the wastewater plant that'll be suitable for the issues." And of course, they have heavy equipment at the landfill they use every day to, to cover, to cap the landfill and, and to do so. So they came in and said, "We'll do it for you." And we really accepted that and they came in, in a short period of time, cleared out any tree growth that was in the target range area. They built the backstops up. We've got approximately now two side berms, about 100 yards, that is eight foot tall. We had a 14-foot backstop berm from a previous cut. We added another five to six feet behind that, so we're, we're well over 20 feet for the backstop berm. So we now have all of the, the necessary safety barriers in place to allow us to, to use firearms out there. Our next step is to get some warning signs up around the perimeter and we'll be in a position we can start not only conducting our full program there, but open it up for more opportunities for youth. And I specifically want to thank landfill manager Brian Basely and Mr. Andrew Brazwell for stepping up and doing such a fine job out there. That really is going to benefit the 4H program in this county. So thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for the others on your staff that I named. I know y'all put a lot of effort into this and you did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stovall, how many youth participate in the shooting program?
We, right now, we have approximately 40 on the, on the roll, but if you look at who shows up typically at a meeting, we probably have somewhere 20 to 25 at every meeting right now. And the shooting, the archery program, we usually don't have any problem getting through that because it's, it's, we've got about three dozen 3D animals out at the landfill and a, and a field archery range with targets they can practice on. But the firearm portion, we basically were going down to Hornet County using a donated time at a private range, but we only had three hours on one, one Saturday morning that we could use it. And it was, we had to limit participation based on that.
So my next question, do you anticipate growth now that we're in the county and have, have space available?
Absolutely. Being able to have our own dedicated range here in the county would allow us to expand the program. And so this has been one of the most popular programs not only on North Carolina but nationwide. And our kids went to a regional tournament last month in the eastern part of the state. Every one of them qualified to go to your state tournament, which was held this past Saturday. I don't have the full results yet, but once we get that in tabulation done, that at some point, I'd like to bring these kids down and have them recognized by, by any measures.
All right, great. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner Davis?
So two weeks ago, I'll go ahead and share for the board about the advanced manufacturing with JCC that opened up and that was just a really cool tour of the facility, of all the opportunities and possibilities that JCC students, the industry is going to have for our county. And it was really neat that all seven of us board members were there at that ribbon cutting event. So really proud to be a part of it and very humbled and just thankful for all the visionary, use our word here, of the planning and that goes into it and the relationships and cooperation with Johnson Community College here in the county.
Commissioner Stevens?
I'm going to echo a lot of what Commissioner Stovall and Commissioner Pace Davis have already said this morning, but just so grateful to be on a board. And I say this all the time, and several of us had the opportunity to participate in a town hall last week where we got to talk a lot about the way we've been collaborating with our legislature, the way we've been collaborating within the county. And, you know, one of the things I said and continue to say is I feel like this is a board that refuses to keep kicking cans. And it's just really great to hear all the things, to both your points, that we've been able to accomplish as a board. And I'm sure, too, the, the public feels like a long period of time, but to us really is a short amount of time. And I feel like it's, it's been because of true dedicated focus that we have, have really stayed on task. So anyway, all of that to say, it was, it was great to hear the amount of collaboration that was going on, like I said, amongst the legislators, amongst us as commissioners, some of the, the other county elected officials. And then with the school board, we got some really encouraging statistics from the school board about how well Johnson County is outperforming other counties in North Carolina, whether it be by test scores or what our teacher pay is. So again, it was just a good, I guess it's just been a good week of a lot of the decisions and things that we're, we're doing are working for a lot of people in this county. So not necessarily a kudos, but I'm, I hope that we continue on this path of no longer kicking cans and getting stuff done.
Yeah.
It has been a busy couple of weeks and both with what Commissioner Stevens said about the town hall and Commissioner Pace Davis with the advanced manufacturing building were both really good events. In addition to that, over the last couple of weekends, I've had the honor of participating in the Benson Mule Days Parade and the Selma Railroad Days Parade and saw a lot of people, met a lot of people. And, and these kind of events, to me, are very important because, especially as a newer person on the board, is I really want the people to be able to put a face with who represents them and, and have an opportunity to, to talk about subjects that they might not, you know, be able to talk about otherwise. So I really enjoy those things. And last thing I wanted to say is, with Chief Ellington here today, I heard a lot of things that were encouraging about collaboration and several of us are on groups that are trying to work with regionalization products, projects toward water and sewer. And I think we could learn a lot of lessons from the way that they have worked together and formed partnerships. And in, in some of these things, I think we, we see that individual towns or organizations may be afraid to relinquish that control and it takes a little bit of trust to move forward and they've done that. And I think we've, we can learn a lot moving forward with our regionalization projects that we're, we're moving toward to make sure that county has the appropriate water and sewer we need for the future.
Mr. Chairman Harris?
Gosh, ditto to all that. That's a lot. But I, I will say, I am proud of the fact that we're able to move a lot of things forward. We have, when I look at the Triangle Land Conservancy partnership that we've had there, the advanced manufacturing facility, you know, the, the potential Clayton campus for Johnston Community College in the future, there, there's a lot of good things happening in Johnston County and I'm really proud of that, that collaboration and that working together. And back to the fire service thing quickly, I will say, when they adopted their mission or their vision, I guess, for this, the sole statement was what's, what's best for the citizens of Johnston County. That's, that was the whole driving force. And I think as long as we use that statement for everything that we do and think about and talk about and collaborate with, what's best for the people of Johnston County. You know, sometimes I've said this board has to plant trees that we will never sit under the shade of, but generations to come will. And so we have to be visionary and be able to continue to do those things. So I'm just thankful that we have a board that does not kick cans down the road and I agree with you. Thank you.
All right, I had two words and y'all have taken one of them, but I'm going to say it anyway, visionary. We talked about that and I think our emergency services and as we saw today, our folks in our fire services, our chiefs, had that vision, one that we may think here in Johnston County is visionary, but when we have so many counties who are reaching out to us saying, "Hey, we want to see what you did. We like what you're doing." And for the folks who, you know, had the courage, I know there's a lot of fear involved when you're giving up, you know, something that you, you control when you have this territory, but for our chiefs to come together and decide that, hey, we do want to do what's best for the citizens of Johnson County and we're willing to sacrifice some of that control for the people of Johnston County. So the vision that they have, they had, they have and they are able to execute on is pretty amazing because sometimes we have vision, we don't have to follow through, but they have definitely had the, the follow-through and continuing to work on that. The other word, empowering, I mean, we've seen that through the discussions on the 4H program. It starts with our young folks and to see what the folks who are willing to volunteer to be able to do to help develop those into some amazing adults, as we've had many folks testify today that they were, they were part of 4H and the success that, that has helped them achieve throughout their adult life is pretty amazing. So those are two words that struck me today as we were sitting here and, and working through our agenda, but visionary and empowering are two words I think do represent the employees of Johnson County as well as the people of Johnson County. With that, I don't think we have any need for the closed session, so I'll entertain the motion.
I was going to mention one other thing.
All right, go ahead.
When Commissioner Davis mentioned the ribbon cutting at the JCC Workforce Development Center, I was over there Thursday in that neighborhood and I noticed they need a sign on the side of the building. I talked with Brooks Moore Friday night and he showed me a picture of what they're planning to put in and it's nice, right on the white part beside of the, the glass on the front. You can see it from the 95, you can see it from the ramp, I think, but it's going to look nice. It'll, it'll draw attention. People always go by and say, "What is that building?"
Yeah, that will be nice.
I'd move we adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I can. All those in favor, please say aye. We are adjourned.